We can start the meeting. So I take it Jess isn't gonna be here?
I, the last word I had is no.
Okay.
Denise had just talked with Cynthia.
My intent is to change the agenda slightly, that I'd like to make the pro tem vote before the meeting minutes and everything, so that we can put it in the hands of the new person, whoever that may be, as soon as possible.
I say you leave it down after public comments.
Oh, there's no time like the present, David. Do we have Levi?
Jerry, do you know if Levi's coming?
I have not heard a word.
Nathan generally called him. I don't have his cell. Does anyone have Levi's cell?
I don't think I, let me see.
I guess I could text Nathan and see if he can do it.
Five oh nine, three eight five. Oh five, something.
Elfer Levi, come on.
Go.
It is three eight five, eighty two ninety four.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Three, sorry, I wasn't in the place to enter it when you said that.
Three eight five, eighty two.
Three eight five, eighty two ninety four.
Ninety four.
Yeah.
Sweet. Stinking five oh nine. Still not used to having to add one.
Well, it used to be we only had to dial four numbers, and before that, it was just three, wasn't it? Clifford, three, four? I think before that, it was smoke signals.
Hi Levi, this is Stephen Hardy. I didn't know if anyone made contact with you, if you were planning on showing up tonight, but if you needed to call in, as you sometimes do, we're gonna get started here, I think, but give me a call back at five zero nine, seven two one, zero two eight three, if you wanna call into the meeting, and we'll get you hooked in. So, thanks Levi, bye.
Is Jess gonna be here?
Alright, so as mayor pro tem, at least for the moment, I will call our meeting to order here at seven oh two with Peter, Joe, David, and myself present. We do have a quorum. We'll recognize visitors.
Denise Halling.
Stan Roth.
Tim Calhoun.
Alright. Any additions to the agenda?
I have one, in its regards, it feels appropriate to do so. It's about the, the minutes of our December twenty ninth meeting. I'd like to discuss the accuracy of those.
Okay. I'm sure that'll probably come up in the discussion of regular meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other additions to the agenda? Alright. I am gonna make a change to the agenda order, in that I would like to move the mayor pro tem tempore selection, sorry, pro tempore selection by council up to above the approval of regular meeting minutes and the approval of bills. My main concern for this is that Jess had expressed to me his wishes to see me fill a different role in the coming season, and to ask David to take on that position. So, in order to fulfill Jess's wishes in that regard as soon as possible, and because the person will be running the meeting going forward, I'd like to put that into, you know, whoever's elected hands as soon as possible, instead of continuing to have the outgoing person run the meeting. So, with that, are there, Levi says, I'm wrapping up, I'll be there as soon as possible. So with that, are there any nominations for mayor pro tem?
Is David formally nominated?
He can be if you want him to be.
I will nominate David.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, nominated by Peter, seconded by Joe, all in favor of Councilman David Budris as the mayor pro tem of the Harrington City Council, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes three zero. Mister Mayor Pro Tem, I hereby turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Stephen. And it's a pleasure. Thank you for all coming tonight. And I guess we'll start off with the approval of regular meeting minutes. Does everybody have those?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions or discussions?
I had previously sent a suggested change to Jerry, although Jerry, I would also extend my apology that I ended up sending it Tuesday morning when you had requested it by Monday, so I apologize for that.
But I got it in there.
Okay. Has there been an updated version sent out, or did you print them off for us?
I thought I sent out the change, but apparently I did not.
Minor correction, but my link up to the December twenty ninth meeting was via Zoom, was it not? Zoom audio?
No.
Telephone?
Well, we called, we called via FaceTime audio, actually.
FaceTime audio?
Jerry?
I was on phone.
Yes, you were.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Was there any difference? Stephen, do you have a different minutes?
I mean, what, it would be best probably to discuss them as written, of what he's about to print.
Did you have any further questions, Peter?
What?
Did you have any further questions on the twenty ninth?
Can I move the minutes? Are we getting an updated version?
Yes, we are.
What's the alteration in the new version?
We'll have that in just a few seconds. The clerk is printing them.
My suggestion to Jerry concerned the discussion of the.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Okay, this is what I have. Did you have any comment?
Just that, so what was sent out in the digital package read is, is following. Councilman Slack brought forward the issue that the article is not completely factual. I suggested that that be, sentence be changed to Councilman Slack asserted that the arti- article is not completely factual.
Okay. Well, that is what I had in question. And in fact, the twenty ninth meeting, I did mention that, I don't know if anybody went back on the tape, we did, I do have a partial recording of that timeline on the tape. If there's any correction that is not factual, it wasn't the DOE that said it, it was Casey Monge that said records have been falsified. And, but it, and that rebuttal's not in here on the records. And going forward, the records are historic point value to the city. I'm not sure what we wanna do with that right now, but I can't accept the, you know, go forward accepting that statement in there as that, how it's stated.
How would you phrase it?
Well, the, I believe the article says, records in Harrington are falsified. And I think it, I believe, do you get the article for me, please? It was mentioned in the tape, in the meeting. Have you had a chance to hear it?
I haven't listened.
I, I think the point that Justin was trying to make wasn't so much that those words were said, but more specifically that the city had not said them, and it wasn't the position of the city.
My interpretation of what Casey said was that she concluded from what she had seen that records must have been falsified, but I don't believe that that was a firm assertion that they were. That was her conclusion. So I think there is a distinction there.
Do we wanna hear, I'm, I'm asking the council this time, entertain listening to the excerpt for about a minute? Before we decide.
Sure.
It's gonna be hard to listen to. You can rewind it.
I'm, I'm a little twisted because when I got here last week and I went out to the wastewater plant, all the machinery was all dry, the pH meter and stuff. Nobody's been out there for a while, and it's a mess.
Let me bring it up a different way.
Well, that pissed me off because I was getting provided numbers that were obviously falsified.
Okay, that was a part.
That, that were obviously falsified. Yeah, okay.
Well, that was the point I wanted to make. It was her that made that comment, so.
And what was the wording in the article? Is the article here?
Yeah, right here. Department of Energy.
Joe, it's forty two minutes and fifteen seconds. If you go back on the actual city of Harrington, it makes it easier.
So, I would, I would agree, having just heard it, that that is what Casey asserted. The article takes that as fact, and we, we don't know her, Casey's assertion to be fact. It could be, but at this point, that's not a, a proven allegation.
So would it be fair to say that we could put in there Casey, according to Casey Monge, records had been falsified?
Yeah, correct.
So how much are you paying her when you don't trust her, Stephen?
I didn't say that I don't trust her. To say that there, that it hasn't been proven is not a statement of trust or not.
She stated that she and Scott and, I believe, O'Neil went out to the grounds, to the lagoon, and nothing had been changed.
Correct.
Everything was dried up.
Correct.
So why isn't that showing? Why do you call that an assertion when it's a statement of fact? It was details that they went out and they saw.
That is their account of it. That's true. That, that's her account of it. It is true that that's her account.
And we're paying her good money to give an account.
True.
So why are you challenging it?
Because I want our records and our minutes to be accurate, and that is to say that we have not proven that. It's not been proven in a court of law, and it's not been verified by us. And so all I'm saying, all I'm saying is that isn't it just true to say that that was the assertion? I'm not saying that it's not true. I'm saying what is factually correct is that that's what she said. That's all that we actually know.
So can a person quote you as saying you don't believe it?
No, because I never said that.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying that we should report what we know to be true.
The council has not personally verified what she asserted. That's all that's being said.
But the people that the council is paying are all in agreement.
Yes, that's true.
Well, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna certify one way or another. Well, you guys all heard that. Did you guys hear good enough what she said?
You could hear what was on the tape recorder?
You didn't hear it very good?
I couldn't hear it very well at all.
Casey did say that there, that records were falsified, I think is, was that, was that the exact word?
Yes, the, the testing equipment for all, the equipment used for testing, when you come out here, was all dried up and hadn't been used in some time. And according to her, the numbers that she was getting were falsified because there's no way to get accurate numbers with the test equipment and the condition it was. She was ascertaining that, her, according to her skill, skill level, professional status, that, that's what she said.
I agree with Stephen's assessment. She only asserted.
Well, for right now, did you write this down, Jerry? Anything on that? If, if that is in here, then we'll vote on it to accept it. If, if it's written in here that, according to Casey Monge, the records have been falsified.
Correct.
And for Justin, I would put in there instead of asserted, in his opinion, this article's not completely factual.
Right.
So you're saying take out the word asserted and put.
In opinion, in his opinion.
From, in his opinion?
Yes. Any more further comments? Discussion, hearing then. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as read with the corrections?
We have a motion.
We need a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion from Stephen, do I hear a second?
Second to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Stephen and a second from Joe to accept the minutes as written and, and amended. Do I signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Zero. Okay. Next. Approval of bills. Everybody have that one? Any discussion on bills?
I do line twenty, the AWC payment, is that the payment in full for the year, for the risk management, for the insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question on line one for Casey Bonje. Do we get a breakdown on her bills and ours, what it's all for? I know it's a little higher, and gonna be a little higher.
It's not itemized to it.
It's not itemized, okay.
No.
And the other questions I have, or line three coincides with line twenty six. The Lincoln County, no, excuse me, yeah, line three and line twenty six. Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, the fourteen thousand, sixty eight dollars and eighty six cents. What?
The Lincoln County charges us at the beginning of the year in January, they send out a bill. That bill states that each quarter how much we owe. I did not see that bill since I started in June. They sent me a notice in December and said I missed the third and fourth payment. So that's what you see on line three.
So that's basic.
And then, then following that, they sent me the one for twenty twenty two.
Okay.
And that's what you see, the first installment down at, the lower one.
Line twenty six.
Twenty six.
Okay, that's, so we played catch up on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I kinda thought that was it. Um, Secretary of State, three hundred, that was for the Digital Library. What's that about, you know? Line, um.
That's the Digital Library Consortium membership.
Mm-hmm.
That's about all I know about that.
Isn't that where we can do eBooks, borrowing the eBooks thing?
I think so.
Yeah.
Something like that.
The sunshine disposal on line twenty nine, does that reflect the new rate increase at all?
Their rate increase?
Yes, yes, sunshine's.
It, it probably does, I just did not check it, because when they send me the bill, they just have the total on there.
Right.
They don't break that out, and then they show every customer that we have.
Because nothing's really changed in the city, because I, I know the last month, it was around thirty four and some change, and I just wonder if this reflects a higher.
Probably not, right?
Yeah, okay.
Can anybody tell me what the automatic percentage increase is in Lincoln County Sheriff's Law Enforcement payments?
Three percent, I think.
Three percent?
I think it was three.
I think it's three.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Everybody happy?
I'd move the check register to be accepted as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Peter and a second by Stephen. All those in favor accepting the check register as presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero.
Is Levi in the meeting yet, or not?
Yeah, he said he'd show up, I think is what he said. He said, I'll be there as soon as possible.
Physically.
So I think he's showing up in person. Do we not have payroll?
Not on this one.
No.
Okay.
At least I don't. Okay, next on for discussion is the passing of ordinance to approve the twenty twenty budget. I know we talked about it in our December twenty ninth meeting, but we didn't do it quite officially, correct? So, is there any discussion on the passage of that ordinance?
Pulling up here.
Alright. I just got a question for the clerk, if he knows. Are we going to attach a non-publicized wage sheet with this? The budget?
Again.
Okay.
Um, that was basically a draft, a template that I found, so I'm hoping it's a correct format. That's my first. If I get an A on the first one, I'll be happy.
Move to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Stephen and a second by Peter. All those in favor adopting the twenty twenty two budget ordinance, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a, motion passes four zero. Okay. Next. Next on the list is mayor comments. Now, I know that I have a sheet here, agenda items, but, Mister Mayor Jess Silhan wanted me to read this to everybody, and the first one, it concerns Johnson Towing. And I'll just read it to everybody. And it says, "The mayor and council, Armand, Councilman Armand, excuse me, are setting up a time with Trevor Johnson of Johnson Towing to review our property." I mentioned, we probably should say inspect is more the proper terminology. So inspect our property. Councilman Armand has been in touch with the county gathering information on the zoning. With this information, the council will be able to prepare a new lease and decisions for the future of the city rental property." That's it. Is that, any corrections for that?
No, yeah, I, no time has been set, you know, can't just drop in, so we've gotta get that set up in advance, and obviously Jess's situation doesn't make him very mobile.
And i- is there the same, and I know this, this flirts with the line both ways because of the situation that property is in, but if it were only a business, do we have the same restrictions or guidelines for, for inspections as for residential property?
I think that is outlined in the lease that's prevailing.
I think there was something there, but generally, I know where you're, you're going with that.
Because I'm just wondering, it's like, if it's being used as a residential property, even though it's not supposed to be, are we legally bound to following the guidelines for entering, entering a residential property even though we haven't rented it out as such?
Um, probably not, but that doesn't mean I'm gonna give it a shot.
Just something to think about, that we might wanna make sure we check all the boxes on both commercial and residential.
We could get to that on our next either workshop or special meeting or council, but that is a good point. But currently, keep in mind, they're under no lease, so that kinda opens stuff up too.
That's, that's technically true, the way I look at it, in a way. Um, I will say I did get a, a snippet of the county map from the planning that shows the different zoning.
Yes.
And I'll forward that to you guys, but it clearly shows that piece of it is, is industrial.
Industrial or light industrial, is this industrial?
It's just, it's just industrial. They don't have a definition in their, their, their planning. It's either industrial and, it's just, it's on that side of the highway.
Well, I personally don't see why it would be anything else, because prior to this, it was fertilizer businesses.
Yeah. So I think that's, in my opinion, I think that's a question that also has to get answered. Just working with planning, speaking to one of the other commissioners, planning commissioners in the county, it, it was indicated that they probably don't care if we ask for a variance. i- it was indicated that they probably don't care if we ask for a variance.
Okay. Well, that's for future discussion, I believe.
Yes.
So, well, thank you, Councilman Armand. Anybody else have anything on that? I'll read part B of mayor comments. Okay, "This week has been nothing short of a war with the weather and all its effects. I would like to give thanks to all our team, to our clerk Jerry Lee, who continuously fed me information while I ran addresses and it, ran down addresses and assessed the problem and needs to move forward. Thanks to Scott McGowan for pinpointing water shut-offs and sewer manholes and the snow removal. Thanks to Councilman David Budrias and Denise Holling for hel- for their help removing snow at Hillcrest Cemetery, where Scotty and I were working to, on getting the dump truck unstuck. To anybody not mentioned, please forgive. Great job, team." And thank you, Jess, and may you get well soon.
Yep, yes, agreed.
All righty. Next on the agenda, your favorite part?
Well, you wanna bet Levi walks in just in time to adjourn?
He will. I have five dollars.
David, where did you read that last text from?
It's, uh, a letter given to me by Jess, right there. You can read all that?
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if he sent it out to anybody else, but.
Not I.
Our agenda.
I don't have this updated agenda. I apparently have the old agenda.
It's an addendum to it, so if I would've wrote all over them, I could-
Could I trouble you for a copy of that, please, Jerry?
What's your agenda of the talk?
Jess's notes.
Do you wanna hand that to Jerry and have him burn, burn that?
Jess, Jess's notes were not sent out.
I'll get you a copy of it, Peter.
I've got it. His notes weren't sent out because I thought he would be here and he would voice those.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, now we get to the fun part. Welcome. Welcome public.
I, I guess one quick thing.
Go ahead.
Um, bef- before we turn over the public, so then would our next meeting time be a workshop on, i- if we're gonna do it on the offset Wednesday, it would be two weeks from today for the workshop?
Calendar.
The twenty-sixth.
I believe Mr. Silhan, Mayor Silhan, did say that he would like a workshop.
Yeah.
Meeting. And, uh-
I think we were gonna, my impression anyway was that we were gonna keep the same schedule that we were on for the, the Wednesdays.
Correct.
The only difference is that the second one would not be an official meeting.
Right. So are we shooting for the twenty-sixth or the nineteenth? Or the twelfth today?
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth.
So the twenty-sixth.
Just wanted to make sure we established that before we adjourned or, or moved to the public comment.
Okay. We're gonna let Levi decide that when I can say, right?
Right.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Um, if we're all in favor, what do you guys, I'm all for it, the twenty-sixth, and I think the last time we had it, I believe it was, was it six or seven? I, I haven't opened any time.
I think it was seven.
It was at seven, yeah.
Would you, would, would you?
I'm free. What are the issues that have to be discussed?
It's just a workshop to discuss our planning, our direction. You get ideas, and I believe it's public. So there's public input as well. That way we, we have a direction, a feel of things going into a meeting. We're more prepared and address those issues. It's an informal meeting. Let's say, well, it's informal.
Yeah, the only thing we can't do is-
Can't make-
Take decisions and take actions.
Yes. Okay. Are you good with that, Peter?
I'm good.
Seven o'clock, good for you? Or do you wanna go, seven's good for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six better?
Same bat times.
Same bat channel, same. Seven o'clock it is. You record that for, to make sure. Does that work for you, Jerry?
Do you want food?
I don't care if, I'm sure they'll appreciate it. You don't, it's not a requirement, but.
Well, and technically, if, if it ever is a problem, you don't have to be here for workshops. Not that I'm discouraging you from attending, but just making sure you're.
But if you want food, I'll bring food so that you're more productive.
Okay. And somebody can bring the pinochle cards.
Bridge six.
Oh, you, you have that over there. Or no. Did he copy it off that I gave to you?
I, I handed it to him.
Okay. I don't hear much rustling around, so you guys are anxious.
Sorry to butt in. You can turn it over to public comment.
Okay, this time we'll turn it over to anybody that wishes to address in the public.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Campa.
Uh, my concern is, uh, tractor trailer rigs, uh, being able to park at will in the downtown business hall. We had an incident. I'm sure most of the citizens probably saw a parked truck here in front of City Hall.
Okay. That was, uh, last week? Or over the weekend, was it?
Well, in the last three, four, five, six days, uh, I didn't, uh,
Go ahead.
What was the nature of the problem, Tim?
Well, it all depends on whether you consider it a problem or not, but in my opinion, a tractor trailer rig with a full trailer and a tractor parked in front of City Hall where the public's supposed to be able to come in and pay their bills and do their business was part blocking this whole area in front of our door.
I know that the city, I've read it, and we're gonna, future meetings and workshop stuff, get into them, is, um, we do have an ordinance currently on the books that does address such stuff of parking overnight or on the street here. I don't know if anybody on the council is familiar with that, but that is addressed, and because we have a new mayor and a new council member, we probably are gonna get into that and to address that. I know on behalf of, um, the semi, where he normally parks, that was kinda compromised, and that might've had something to do with it. But I do agree, that does have to be addressed. Because that definitely did take up the whole, the cleanest spot in town. And, uh-
Yeah, that, it's quite ironic that he would pick the best spot. Now, I'll give him a little bit of leeway as the snow was punched. He usually parks over in his usual spot, over there by the old gas station garage. And apparently there was too much snow in the way, so I guess we could give him some credit there, but.
Well, one thing leads to another. You wouldn't wanna eighteen wheeler stuck, jackknifed, and more problems. And I would, on behalf of the city, I would urge, I am, the, the citizens, thank you for your patience. The city's been under considerable strain, in my opinion, with no public works, uh, bodies, personnel, and the snow removal period. Um, I know it's snow, this is a Pacific Northwest, it does snow, but people don't usually think about it, in some instances, the degree until it happens. So I guess it's kinda, um, we made the best do with what we had, and it wasn't perfect, but it was a, it's a work in progress. And we hope to not get caught like that again going forward. And so we're slowly working on, I know Jess, the mayor, is, um, really concerned with that as well. And he's looking at some, well, we're just looking at getting the, the personnel to address that. So normally, would that happen? Probably not a whole, whole lot ever. But given the conditions of the snow melting and freezing and, and bless Scotty's heart for, you know, coming back, uh, we got him to come in and, um, plow. But he couldn't do everything, because at the same time, we had several sewer plug-ups. We had water issues, flooding basements. We had the job of about six people and only one person to attack all that, so, I guess a little bit of leniency on this, but there is ordinance, there is an ordinance, I'd say, that addresses that. And I think going forward, that'll, we will address those issues in future meetings. But thank you for your comment.
Do you know what the ordinance is and what it says?
You know, I ran across it last year, that, probably last summer, when I was working on the junk vehicle ordinances and stuff. And, um, it, it, to summarize it a little bit, it had to do with parking over vehicles, didn't say trucks or anything, just vehicles, period, on the city streets overnight. It didn't allow that. Now, whether it's been repealed, but it was in the ordinance file. And see, we, there's so many ordinances we have to update. But it di- it, it didn't allow for overnight parking.
Yeah, when, when Dylan was here, what, five years ago now, I had an incident next to my residence where those people are long haul tractors too. And, uh, he pulled his tractor right into that little narrow driveway next to my bedroom with his pump motor running periodically all night.
That, I understand that, that, that's-
And so, I, I remember Dylan, he, they did write a letter and submit to those folks in, in accordance with, you know, the situation and what have you.
Hey, Levi, would you mind sitting here?
I would not mind, as long as I can bring these with me.
You can have it, really.
You write just in time, I think.
All righty, um-
Now, that, that should be in the record somewhere, I would imagine.
Right.
Well, there's been discussion previously, if I recall, about semis that had left oil stains on the road or semis that were parking on roads that were not capable of bearing the weight, and there was discussion as to whether they would injure public property. So I know that there's been discussions about semi parking, I remember.
Right.
What part of the city does this pertain to? Just this block?
That I couldn't answer, but I, I think it was the main, it wasn't residential, it was the downtown ordinance. It addressed, I believe, Third Street. So the business district. It wouldn't encompass the residential. I think it was mainly the businesses. But again, I have to go see that box over there. I'll have to go in and, and we'll have to dig that out. Maybe in the next workshop, Wednesday, or, um, the twenty-sixth, we'll, uh, pull that out and get going, moving on it. It's already been written, but I, but see, we don't have, the city doesn't have any coded, well, law enforcement. We used to have a, a town marshal that you could call and take care of, you know, something of that nature. But right now, I, I don't know, that'd be another avenue, but until we get it updated, make sure it's, it's factual and current or still on the books, then we can go about ways to enforce it. Or whatever. Any other comments from the public? No?
Levi showed up to adjourn.
Made it just in time.
We're going to meet the twenty-sixth of, of January. Is it twenty-sixth or twenty-ninth?
Twenty forty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, at, at seven o'clock for the workshop.
Okay. Okay.
So here and nothing. Going once, going twice.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second for-
Now he speaks. Now he speaks.
We have a motion from Levi, or Councilman Schenk, and a second from Councilman Armand to adjourn. Signify, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass-